We are recording, thank you.
All right. We'll bring the Cotlawn Heights City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October 6, 2020 to order. First item on our agenda is to read the determination concerning an anchor location as we've done in each of our meetings. For those who may be curious, the mayor is out of town. My name is Scott Brack and I am the mayor pro temp and so I will be conducting the meeting. And so I will read that statement. Pursuant to Utah Code 52-4-207-4, the city's mayor, as chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this state at an anchor location, presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. With that taken care of, welcome everyone. We can all hear and see there's, Tim is with us. Shane should be here shortly. First item is review of the business meeting agenda. First item on there will be a welcome and rereading of the same determination that we just did. Following that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Michael, would you be willing to do that for us tonight?
I'd be happy to, thanks.
Okay. After that, we will do citizen comments. I think things have got to the point where we've been able to give everyone the three minutes that's listed as well as keeping it with under the hour. If it's okay, I prefer that we kind of just kind of move to that and not make any changes. Is that okay with everyone else?
Yeah, three minutes is great.
Okay. If it looks like we have a significant queue as we approach the end of the hour, then we'll, then maybe we can look and make a determination there. My suggestion on something like that is that anybody that might be left in queue because we were over time be given first shot at the next batch of comments, but if there's a way we can accommodate them, I prefer to do it that way. I expect it will probably be okay. The next item is another public comment section on about the outdoor lighting ordinance. Mike, could you give us a brief overview of that? And then I'll probably ask you similarly to do a brief presentation in the meeting. This one's technical in nature, so I don't think it'll take very long.
Yeah, thank you. This one, for some reason, we can't really determine why, but when the outdoor lighting ordinance was enacted, the, I think the wrong draft language was given to codify. So it includes a kind of a rogue reference to this ordinance only applying in single-family zones. That was never the intention. It was never presented that way and it's not, it's not the case. And I think it's pretty clear when you read the rest of the ordinance that this is meant to apply everywhere. So we're just proposing to strike out three lines that reference that this code is only applicable in a single-family zone and make sure that it's clear that it's always been the intention to be applicable citywide.
Are there any questions about that? Okay. The next one is a public comment on a zone change on Highland Drive. There were a couple of comments that Tim included to us in the council communications. And I believe there was another that came in just prior to the beginning of this meeting. But Mike, if again, if you maybe take a cup, just a minute or two, let us know what happened with the planning commission. So that we will be up to speed on that.
Sure, I've got a full presentation that I'll share in the business meeting that will go through this with some slides. But for now, this is just a property on the Highland Drive frontage road, just, just kind of south of the city boundary. There's a kind of the row of homes that fronts that frontage road have been in the general plan since about 2009 designated as residential office. So a long-range designation moving away from single-family and into a more residential office type use. We've seen three rezones come in previously for properties along this stretch. It's three rezones, but I believe it's about five or six properties that have been captured in those rezones. And we've seen those redeveloped into medical and dental office buildings. This is along that stretch of homes as well. This is on the very northern edge of that frontage road. Also, in the general plan as residential office, this is just one property. This is not a combination of multiple pieces here, so it's much smaller than the other ones we've seen. But the request tonight is to rezone that one as well to residential office. The applicant has stated that their intention is to keep the home there and to use it as a bed and breakfast. Not an Airbnb, but an actual bed and breakfast that has an attending resident that lives there and, you know, runs a little bed and breakfast. Obviously, when the zone is changed, any use granted in the RO ordinance would be applicable in that zone. So the stated intention tonight is to use the existing house as a bed and breakfast with the caveat that that could change if the rezone is granted. But the, we got a handful of public comments. I think you've seen those. The planning commission reviewed this and took public hearing and made a unanimous recommendation of approval to the city council.
Hey, is there anyone who has any questions about that? I expect we may get a comment or two in our citizen comments later. Or does anyone have any concerns about that?
Just procedurally, any use that comes in after the rezone, except a single-family residence is a conditional use. So pretty much anything except a home would go back to planning commission. And that's the point where we'd address traffic concerns and parking and setbacks and building heights and things like that.
No, go ahead, Doug.
Are they saying they, they won't make modifications to the present home or they will? Or is this just a zoning change without any construction?
Well, this is just a zone change tonight. So actually changing the use, even if they want to use the same building, will require planning commission approval and another public hearing. That being said, in their narrative, they've stated they want to use the existing home and maybe fix it up a bit and use it as a bed and breakfast. But if the zones change, they would be entitled to anything allowed in that ordinance again after going through planning commission, public hearing process.
Yeah, and as I've stated in the post in the past, anytime you're looking at a zone change, that attaches to the property and it goes, it doesn't change with ownership. And so you need to be comfortable with whatever is currently listed in the zone as being a use. I appreciate the owner's sentiments and what they may do, but they also may decide to sell it the next day and the next person may do whatever is allowed or conditionally used in that zone. And in this particular case, we have a pretty good idea of some of the, you know, what the RO allows because that entire stretch along Highland Drive is all our own. There's a couple of other places we've utilized it in the city. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I just had one question. I know in a lot of the public comments, Mike, there was concern about parking. Can you just speak a little bit about that? I apologize, I didn't read the planning commission minutes.
Sure, yeah. So any use is going to have parking requirements, whether that's an office or a bed and breakfast or something else. And in the RO zone, even though that might not practically be what occurs, the, the use has to provide enough parking onsite to accommodate that parking demand. So we don't use on-street parking spaces to count towards the total required parking. So they have to be able to fit all the parking spaces they need for whatever use they're proposing on the property. And then on this one where it's on the corner, we would make sure that we're not creeping too far into the neighborhood and impacting it that way. So even though there, you do see a lot of on-street parking over there, all of those uses by code have enough parking on their, on their parcels to accommodate the demand.
It seems like this is this, I mean, this parking issue comes up a lot because there's that balance between, we want to have the right number, we want to encourage public transit, but then it overflows into the streets and it, and so it just seems like, I know that my children go to the orthodontist over there and there's always people parked on the frontage. And there's always, it seems like the parking places along, within the business area are all utilized as well. What's, is there, I know, I know I asked you this years ago and I apologize for not remembering. Is there, do we need to increase the number of parking spots in certain situations when they butt next, next to like main entrances to a neighborhood? I know somebody else talked about making a dead end. I mean, I don't know, just.
I think it becomes kind of an on-street parking policy discussion. And, you know, I think we've, maybe a past council has talked about parking on this frontage road in particular of whether it should be allowed or prohibited. I think we kind of landed on, it's a really wide road. So even though there is parking on both sides, there's still plenty of space generally for cars and emergency vehicles to get through there. Certainly, if the impact of a business is well beyond what the site can accommodate, then the planning commission would, would hopefully make recommendations there to either reduce the impact of the business, to reduce the footprint or the size of that business, or increase parking somehow. That being said, I think with the, like the dentist office, what I've heard is they require their employees to park on the street and then leave the parking lot open for, for customers. And, and that's, that works because the on-street parking is allowed there right now. But again, by code, they have enough parking on their site based on their square footage and their use. So I don't think there's an easy solution. You can look at prohibiting on-street parking. You can look at amending or changing how we require parking, but, but you always, you're right, you want that balance. You don't want to require massive parking lots for every single use in the city. And I don't know what the right answer is there.
Thanks, Mike.
Anything else on that, that item that we, we'll, we'll see if we get any more comment?
Yeah, real quick, staff will address the email that we did get, the concerned neighbor, right?
Oh, is this a new email since the one in the packet?
Yes, there was another one from another one of the Nelsons.
Mike, I will send that, I will send that to you and yes, we can address that.
I think, yeah, I'll read it. Paula sent it to me. I can be ready to address it in the business meeting.
All right. Thank you. As far as, so we have three sections of public comment tonight, our regular citizen comment and then two public comment periods following that. We'll take those one at a time. As far as action items, ordinance 344 would be taking action on the outdoor lighting ordinance. That does seem strange that that verbiage got in there, so that's mostly a technical change. I don't see that there should be any problem getting that. Ordinance 345 is, would actually rezone the property, 6632 South Highland Drive from R18 to RO. That's, that's fine, we can take action on it if there's significant concern. Don't feel that we could table it for two weeks. If, if you feel that for whatever reason, things have not been addressed. I think the planning commission, from what I understand, the reason the mayor put this on for action the same night as the planning commission was unanimous in its recommendation. And it matches, it's, it's not a general plan and zone change. But if you've got a concern about doing that at the same time, let me know before we get to 6.2. And then 6.3 is a property surplus resolution. Scott Jurgis, do you have a couple of minutes and kind of brief, brief us on what's included in that?
Excuse me, yes, I can do that. So we have a list of some IT-related items. Pardon me, laptops, desktops, some surge protectors, monitor stands, monitor trees, printer and a letter folding machine as well as we have three vehicles and one public works equipment item that we want to surplus. And those have all been declared extra by the various department directors over them. And we're just going through the process of declaring that at this point in time with my recommendation.
And these go to, does everything go to an auction house or the vehicles handled differently?
Yep, they all go to an auction house and then they're, they're run through the auction process. And then we get the funds from that, you know, less their commission when they make the sale.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, the only other thing is the minutes for the first and the 15th. Paula, was there any concerns or changes to those that were submitted?
There was a small change on one of the lines I resubmitted that to the city council last week for review.
Okay. That's right, I recall that one. I don't remember which one of those two. After that, just adjournment, so. Okay. Back to our regular work session agenda. Staff reports, well, first item on there we have is a budget and revenue review. With Scott Jurgis, you're listed, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. So I'm going to share my screen here. All right, so, pardon me. So this is our sales tax collection for the month of July. We just received this on the 21st, I think, of September. We received just under $600,599,000, that's represented by this second bar, comparative to the prior year. It's $66,000 ahead of the prior year. It's the highest July ever that the county, or the county, the city has received. So all in all, as we're looking at the trends, we're not seeing the reduction in sales tax that we had anticipated in our budget here when we set it up for $5,750,000. Last year, we received $6,719,000. I think that you will see a recommendation shortly to likely alter our budget on the sales taxes to reflect more current projections of where we think that might land as we get some more data. But you can kind of see the trends over these past several years. I think that the trend 2020 was about 6% ahead of 2019. As you go back, you know, in other years, you'll have growth rates in the 3% to 5% range for a lot of that. Going to, this is the county option highway transportation sales tax. Again, this one was received for the month of July. We received about $53,000. We have a budget of $600,000. Last year, we had the same budget. We had received about $586,000. The $53,000 that we received in July is about $8,000 ahead of what we received in 2020. It was a new tax, like I said, in 2020, did not exist prior to that. This was kind of the source of funds where they used the Senate Bill 277 projects that were dispersed from the county in the three or four years ago kind of timeframe. So anyhow, we're seeing this come in. We're confident that it'll be in the range of what our budget is. For the Class C roads, we've received four periods. The four periods that we've received, we actually recognize May and June in the current year. You can see that represented here. Through the four-period timeline, we've received $390,000 year-to-date. That's about $27,000 behind 2021. 2021 was a very high year. It pretty much matched what we had received in 2018. 2019 showed a little bit of a dip from that. The trend over the past several years has been slight dips each year in the Class C roads funds. This is basically taxes on gasoline, on quantities of gasoline. Again, so as vehicles get more fuel efficient, this revenue will have a tendency to decline. So anyhow, but we're seeing that be a little bit behind where we were here in 2020. Our budget does reflect a little bit of a reduction from what we received in 2020. I don't see that we'll be drastically off of what our budget, although it's early in the period there. That's all I have. I'll go through more of this on the 20th when we do our quarterly budget review. That's a little bit more robust than this review, but just wanted to hit the main items of revenue on this review. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, it's still, it's surprising, happily surprising that revenues haven't dipped significantly like we feared that they have and they're staying relatively stable, at least for the sales taxes. So that's really good news and certainly goes into, we discussed having a budget adjustment that would take effect January 1st. So you'll be updating revenue numbers and such for our next meeting in that budget presentation. I'm assuming, is that correct, Scott and/or Tim?
Yeah, we're trying to shoot to get a, an updated five-year projection by next meeting so that we can kind of outline where we think things are going to go because how we've got things budgeted this year with a large use of fund balance, I don't think that's going to come to fruition. I think we'll, we'll be much closer to even. But we're still working on a lot of the details of that as well as projections going out into future years.
Okay. Are there any questions on this specific item? Because the next one or two items also deal with the budget. We can certainly pick things, questions up there as well. Like I say, it's good to see that those, some of those numbers are not dipped nearly as much as we had feared they may.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no questions, then let's go ahead and go on to the item B, which is an inflationary tax increase discussion. This is also listed as you, Mr. Jurgis. So do you want to go ahead with that? Tim, if you wanted to jump in at some time, you're certainly welcome.
Yeah, let me just say that as Scott's going to pull up some, some information. This was an item that was requested to be on the agenda to have a discussion on, councilmember Michael wanted to have the conversation. And there were other, the mayor and other council members that agreed to have that conversation. So we've tried to do some basic research to help you understand what, what other communities have done and the implications to that. And then I think it can just go into the conversation. If councilmember Michael has things she wants to add, as far as the discussion, that would be great as well.
Pardon me. So really quick, I took all of the different taxing districts, entities and what have you from Salt Lake County. I did a research from 2020 back through 2011. And I pulled out any years where an entity would need to do a truth and tax process, which would mean that they increased the tax above and beyond what the certified tax rate would be. So anytime that you have a year-one entity such as Brighton listed right here, they, they have to go through a true, truth and tax process for that. So typically, either year-one of an entity or the first year that an entity imposes a property tax, there will be a tax. And anytime that there's a red, like in Brighton here, the entity did not exist prior to that or did not impose a property tax prior to that. Usually, it's did not exist prior to that, but anyhow, you can kind of look through that. The, I've organized this by Salt Lake County at the top. Then the cities all here and then districts all down through this area, which goes quite extensive, 33 districts, and then the school districts in the, in the valley. So I'm going to kind of slide back up again. So anytime where there is an X in here, that is a year that they did a property tax increase utilizing the truth and tax process. There could be an entity, I'm aware of, Jordan School District did an increase in taxes. It was a voter-approved increase in taxes that did not technically follow the truth and taxation process that I did not include on this. But outside of that, I believe we've captured all the different entities. One of the questions that was asked, what I think, if I understand accurately, is could we do like a year-over-year cost of living or fixed kind of rate tax increase? In looking at this, you'll see that a lot of entities are kind of sporadic when they do tax increases. They don't tend to follow year after year. But in looking at the data, I'm going to just scroll down. The row 48 here, the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, looks like since 2016, they implemented some type of cost of living type tax increase in their process. Now, and I'll just note another one and then I'll note a couple of things that you need to be aware of about it. It looks like the Salt Lake Valley Law Enforcement Service area has done the same thing since 2018. I'm specifically aware in Salt Lake Valley Law Enforcement Service area of discussions related to this happening. I am not specifically aware with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, any discussions or anything. So it could be coincidental or it could actually be real. Anytime that you're going through and if you wanted to impose a tax increment increase, you have to go through the process each and every year. It's not like you can make the decision, say in 2016, and the decision is already made for you for 2017, 18 or these other years. You would have to make that decision specifically in each of those tax years. So you, and because you can't bind a future council, you can give direction somewhat along the line of it's recommended or it's the intent of this council that exists today, the, to do some type of, you know, increase to, to property tax. However, what you cannot do is you can't just set it in place in a year and then never have to do anything in any of those future years. Each and every year, you would have to reaffirm the desire to do that. I forgot to do one item and I'm going to pull that up really quick for just reflective purposes. If our current property tax is in the budget at just barely over $8 million. And so if we were to do a 1% property tax increase, 1% would equate to about $80,000. And so every, you know, increment of percent above and beyond that, it would just be a factor of that. So if it was 3%, it would be roughly $240,000. You know, just whatever increment of that 80,000 times, you know, each, each percentage point that you would do. Of course, that would change as the, as the rate increases into the future or, you know, even if it decreased in the future accordingly. Of course, that would change as the as the rate increases into the future or you know, even if it decreased in the future accordingly. Because the base would either shrink or increase according, you know, reflectively on that. And so it would change. That but in in a snapshot of today's dollars, it would be really close to eighty thousand dollars net increase for each percent. That you, you know, choose to do in terms of a tax increase if that was the way uh that you wanted to go on that. Not sure that I have any other specific items unless there's some discussion about it and then I can. Um, you know, look at. Possibly answering some additional questions.
I have a question and maybe we can deep dive into this um with staff, but Riverton. If you scroll back up, they seem to be kicking butt. Back when you did the budget comparison, Riverton was just outshone everybody else. And then you look at the taxing and they've had a reduction. What is going on in Riverton?
So Riverton's a little bit of a special case. Their rate is actually zero right now. Riverton is involved in a law enforcement service area. In twenty twelve, they went from paying for their police from a uh direct contract from their city. To joining the Salt Valley Law Enforcement Service area. And then when they left the Salt Valley Law Enforcement Service area. They actually created um a district right here. Where they did a tax increase here to fund law enforcement in their city. And then they're also part of the Unified Fire Service Area that's right here. And so they're also a part of the fire service areas. So their two highest cost. Individual items in their budget are paid for by entities other than the base Riverton City. Um, revenues. And so that needs to be noted that Riverton is a bit of an anomaly comparatively speaking when you're looking at other cities. With us in our city, all of our costs flow through our tax rates and and any revenues that we get through the general fund up here. So we're we're totally different when you were, when you, if you were to compare us to Riverton. And if you were to do a comparative property tax for Riverton, you would actually need to add up their police. Uh, district as well as their fire service area district um in order to compare, you know, rates if you were looking at rates. Which this particular analysis did not actually look at the rates.
I I would note Harriman is also um, I believe, uh, created their own. District for paying for police services and they're also a member of U F UFA. Is that correct?
That is accurate. Yes, they used to be.
They they would be in a similar situation.
Yeah, during these years back here, they were part of the Salt Lake Valley Law Enforcement Service area. And then they created their own and Harriman City, I believe, is in the process of looking to leave. The Unified Fire Service Area likely to utilize this same district in order to generate taxes. Uh, to pay for their fire uh service area. Um, and I don't know the timing of that or anything, but I just don't know them looking at that.
Well, I kind of like that. Maybe we should do three separate taxing entities. Are what pros and cons off the top of your head?
Well, you would have to do a a separate um CAFR and budget for each um entity. Um, so it so that would be, you know, a bit of a deal because they're separate actual legal entities. They're not just subsets of the city. Um, and it becomes a little bit cumbersome. As you look at that, you also cannot transfer money. Um, out of this, say to the general fund of, say Harriman or the general fund of Riverton. It can only be used for the purposes of what those uh districts are created for. So it does limit your ability to um, you know, potentially access those funds if there were to be any uh extra extra funds. There's probably other issues, but those are the ones that kind of came to mind really quick.
What what? Well, and what about the other? Uh, you take using excess funds, but what if there's a shortage there?
I think if there's a shortage, you could transfer from a city budget to a di- uh district budget. As long as there was support from the city to do that, um, where I do, I believe that would be allowable. Cause the city has a lot more broad um. Responsibilities when it comes to funding these various services.
The the other thing is if you're i- if you're increasing, and this is obvious, but if you're increasing. Taxes on any of these, you know, it's not just your city doing it. You have to do it individually for each of these taxing. Entities as well. If you are looking at an increase, which. Could be cumbersome as well, just because they're treated as separate entities and you have to administer those things that way as well.
Thank you, Scott, for generating that. That was interesting.
Yep.
So Scott, I I thought uh it sounds like. That maybe there are other cities that have implemented this, but I I I thought I read in the news that there were other cities that actually implemented this. I thought Murray was one, but maybe my memory is foggy.
So.
Murray is Murray is not one. I I can tell you that they've only done a tax increase once in about. Twelve years roughly. So I know that Murray is not one. I think uh one time I had heard West Valley. Was looking at doing this, but that's not what we found, correct, Scott?
Yeah, I had thought that West Valley was possibly a city that was doing it as well and did not see that when I did the re- research. Salt Lake City is probably the city that has done the most tax increases. You can see they don't get. Beyond about a year without doing a tax increase and they have three years in a row right here in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Um, so I'm not, I'm not totally sure the reason why they did tax increases in each of those years. There may be a specific reason that they targeted a tax increase, but I didn't go to that level. In, you know, the various entities to try and figure that out. Um, so.
And you said it was one, one percent generates three hundred thousand. Is that right?
One percent was eighty thousand.
Eighty, yeah, about eighty thousand. So if you did say a three percent, it would be in the range of two hundred and forty thousand, somewhere in that range.
Uh, Tim, what was our sig- uh, before everything went the way that it did? What was our? Projected uh cola for the this this year's budget? It was like two point one or something?
Two two point three, I think. Isn't that correct, Scott? I think it was two point three.
The hmm.
So, yeah, I mean, if it was two point three, two, whatever that, you know, that's gonna be a hundred eighty, a hundred seventy, five hundred eighty thousand dollars if we had. That policy in place this year. Um.
Let's see. So I don't have it itemized out here, but um. Cause there was market merit and call, I believe it's in the two hundred and forty thousand dollar range for the merit aspect of it. And then the cola aspect would be a little bit dependent on the actual percentage. And I can't right now remember what that was.
I think it was two point three. Uh, that's what I'm think, that's what I remember.
Yeah.
I guess I asked to to me, it kind of gets down to be a philosophical uh item. I do recall I was in a. One of the breakout sessions um at the league meetings in Saint George. It's been a couple of years ago. When they were just, they were discussing ver- truth and taxation items such as this. And there was one, uh, there was a town in central Utah. Excuse me, it wasn't. I don't actually now I don't remember what was a town or was a city that just had a general policy. They had said, we just basically told. Ask the citizens, would they rather have annual cost of living type truth and taxation things, or would they rather have us? Save them up and then hit them with something, you know, larger, which is what you see. Um, you know, like Sandy's last one came out as a huge number because it'd been. Uh, so long, twenty some odd years since they'd done their previous one. Um, either way works, um, uh, I guess it just depends on whether you'd rather do it uh. Uh, a little by little over over the years, or rather you'd wait up until you need to, you know, seriously do something. Um, we didn't, we didn't do any tax increase, you know, for the first ten years. And then we, I think we landed a. About. It was eleven or thirteen percent on the one that we did back in eighteen. Um. But again, I I guess it gets to be philosophical. We we're all aware that uh cost of living, cost of construction, cost of. Healthcare, cost of keeping your employees um whole and keeping them in in a competitive market. Those costs always rise year over year. Um, uh, we've, we have the luxury or at least the benefit of as a city that we also have sales tax with. Changes with the economy, but uh property tax does stay strictly flat. And so. Um, if if I understood what you were asking specifically for Christine is whether we should. Give any type of direction or. Or discuss a policy of whether we should put some sort of a cola. To staff when they're preparing the next year's budget that then the council would discuss. In the retreat on whether they felt it was necessary that you that year or not. Is that? Fair or is that a? Misunderstanding of what you were asking for.
I I was, I'm just trying to get a better, broader picture um. Of how the fund balance interacts with stormwater in interacts with um cholera raises interacts with coronavirus. So just, I feel hol- holistically, I I've wanted to get a the big picture of where we are at. As in public works is, you know, asking for a new building. And so you have all these needs and. How do you put all the pieces together to get what people need while being thoughtful to those of all. Um, economic levels in our community. So thanks, Scott, for for helping that.
Are there any other questions or comments? Um, like I said, to to me, it becomes philosophical and I honestly it'd be a question that I would. Even you put out the public, would you rather do it this way or that way? Um, typically, you know, if you look through the Xs and how sporadic they are, most uh entities tend to do it. Um, a little more sporadically, um, some more often than others. Um, I know that the the uh, I believe also, uh, and Tim and Christine, you 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 may be more familiar with this. Simply because you're you you're on the uh Legislative Policy Committee. Um, there have been a couple of bills and proposals for the legislature to. Consider putting some sort of a. Um, inflationary factor into the certified tax rate. So far, that has not gotten anywhere. Do you know if that's something that they're gonna consider again this year? Siri, I I guess the question would would, is it something they're going to consider seriously?
So I haven't heard this year and Councilmember Michael, the maybe you've heard something differently, but I haven't heard. Anything specifically on it this year. It usually start, they usually start having more conversations about it. As we get closer to January, there's been so many other things they've been dealing with. I know one of the things that was discussed was the possibility of. Of not requiring the truth and taxation process um for a cost of living adjustment and tax increases. But there's been no, there's been no uh. Nothing that's really occurred or come forward on that, but those have been some of the conversations I've heard of up there.
Again, I know some people are are think that that's reasonable and there's others that are very adamantly against the very concept. Cause that flies in the face of what they feel truth and taxation is. And so um. You know, at the end of the day, we as a city council and as a city are charged with providing various services. Um, some by statute, um, others by choice to our citizens and we need to. Do that balancing act and find either the fund or make the choices on which services we provide, so. Um, is that a, I assume that's a spreadsheet that you could, you could either uh send out to us. If you, if you could, Scott, that would be interesting to at least have for reference. Or at least have it someplace where when someone asks you, what did you do with this spreadsheet? You it's 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 quickly available to forward to us.
Yeah, I have it in a PDF uh that I'll send to um Paula and have her um circulate out.
Are there any other questions on this subject? And I'm glad if that's what, if that if that gets you what you were after, Councilmember Michael, I think that's that's great. Thank you. Um, okay, the next item on our list is a discussion of the uh stormwater fee. Um, I've got that listed uh for under Matt's ship. Um.
Yeah, I I meant Matt and I are gonna um. Work on this together, present this together. Matt, you want, you want me to start or you wanna start?
If you, I, yes, if you wanna start, Tim, and we'll see where the direction goes.
Okay, so we talked about this a cou- a few weeks ago and I've provided a memo that. Hopefully provides additional information that will help you uh understand the options and and kind of the methodology behind those. A few things to to think about. Obviously, if a fee is dedicated, it's a dedicated funding source. Um, that does not compete with other budget uh budgeted projected uh projects or services. We've been following and kind of, I meet regularly with the county or the city managers of Holiday and Mill Creek. They've been going through the same process that we're considering as well. In fact, Mill Creek just adopted their uh stormwater fee, just this um for the, I believe, July first. And so they're just implementing it. Holiday is right where we are at in the process, maybe. A couple of weeks ahead of us, but not very far. And um they both uh been looking at this and one of the arguments that Mill Creek um talked about in their public processes was that. This fund would be dedicated to addressing these stormwater issues and doesn't compete with other other projects that the general fund. Um, would would uh implement with the project. So. That's something that is for your consideration and a lot of the options that we're looking at has elements that I'll explain related to that. The the fee also allows municipalities to adequately manage. Federal and state mandated regulations as well as the the infrastructure projects and ongoing operations. And so so it's really a key um aspect of of if you want to really go forward and address some of the stormwater issues. So back in February, we completed the stormwater fee study and also the capital facility needs assess- assessment, which we talked about. A few weeks ago, um TO engineers did the needs assessment, Zion's Public Finance did the fee study. And these scenarios and options are based on those elements. We have about nineteen point two million dollars worth of projects that has to be addressed based on that needs assessment. And um these funding scenarios will will help us take significant steps to addressing. Um, those needs. And so it's really something that is an important issue to consider and also an important issue to. To have public input in that process. And I just want to say that what we're talking about tonight, and if there's a decision made to. To move forward with an option, it's really the starting point of this whole process. We we have a huge amount of um. Effort that has to occur to get public input. And um that's very important in this process and it might even modify the way you look at it as policymakers related to this issue. And and what you want to ultimately um consider or adopt or not consider or adopt something. So. This is really the beginning points um that we're hoping that we can narrow down to an option and then start us or give us the opportunity to go and. And start getting public input on on this information. So I wanted to just mention that in addition to that, we have um. The additional funding source will help address issues, obviously, and as I mentioned, it will not compete with the other services. It's also in many ways more equitable in collection of funds. Because um tax-exempt properties are are right now, the general fund is paying for stormwater projects. And those that have tax-exempt properties are not paying into that, yet they're creating some of the stormwater needs that we have uh as far as. To address projects. And so it's more equitable because um all properties, there's there's a formula that's established. That all properties would pay into this. And then it's more representative of those contributions for the services that uh that are provided. So anyway, that that is, that is kind of the groundwork for what I want to share. Let me just go through some of the options real quickly. And it's outlined in my memo. I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see that? Everyone, okay. So what we did is we we put together, um, originally, we had three options that we talked with you about a few weeks ago. Um, Mayor Peterson also wanted us to look at a fourth option, which we've included as well. But let me just show you. Can you see that cursor? You see my cursor? Okay. So what what we're trying to focus on is. As much as we can in apples-to-apples comparison with having a a around a million dollars. Available after expenses are covered to um facilitate capital maintenance projects. And also any debt service if we're looking at that. We're not going to be talking about bonding or debt service in any of these right now. That's a decision that would have to be made down the road. But what we're trying to do with these options is look at having at least a million dollars for projects and for. Maintenance and things such as that. So under the first option, we have a six, six dollar, uh. ERU or equivalent residential unit amount that would be paid and I'll explain what that means in a a little bit. There would be a three percent increase per year that's based, um, on that. And so you can see about twenty cents per year. And so, um, basically what a six dollar would do is it would generate about one point one five million. But then, uh, what it would take was is a continual transfer of the general fund. We budget around six hundred thousand that I talked to you. About last, uh, or three weeks ago. It would still require that we have that transfer from the general fund, so there would be very minimal savings to the general fund. And that would need to occur in order to have the one a little over a million dollars to address projects and capital. So this is kind of how the implications going to Councilmember Michael's comments a few minutes ago, what the implications would be for the general fund. With each of these scenarios, um, there would be a minimal savings with the six dollar amount, um, and that would be. That option. The second option is option two, which is nine dollars. Basically not. For every dollar that you increase, it's about, um. It's about a hundred ninety two thousand dollars worth of of, uh, funding. But basically nine dollars, um, would get you about one point seven million after the costs or expenses are covered. You'd be at the million, but you would not have any transfer from the general fund, so there would be a savings of six hundred thousand with the nine dollar option. Then option three is the seven dollars and fifty. A cents, um, once again, you can see the elements in here, what what it would collect. Um, if you added or if you basically cut the the, uh, general fund of. Contribution in half, it would get you up to the million dollars, so you would save about three hundred thousand in the general fund with the seven fifty. Amount and then looking at the five dollar option. That would require an increase in what the general fund contributes by about two hundred thousand. To get roughly the million dollars. So those are the options. Um, what what it does as far as. The impact for individual property owners. I appreciate, uh, Matt Ship put this, uh, spread or this, uh. Graph together this table. It shows the ERU, uh, equivalent residential units in the in the study. And the analysis that's about five thousand square feet. So your typical home with would be paying the monthly of five dollars or annually sixty, that's with the five dollar amount. Six dollar, you can see what the the monthly and annual would be on these. Um, clear up to the nine dollar, that would be your typical home. Basically, then you have a church, um, all the churches. It just roughly averaging what the square footage would be, and this is impervious surface area. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Matt, that's. How we get to the ERUs. They average about a hundred and six thousand. Matt, were you going to say something?
No, I was gonna say, yeah, that's correct. It's based on the study of the area.
Yeah, and then you can see the different scenarios of what the annual and monthly would be. Same with the school. Um, large businesses were are those businesses with large parking lots or large, uh. Building envelopes that have, um, impervious surface areas. And so you can see what the monthly and and annual amounts would be for many of these large businesses. Medium businesses would be smaller, such as office buildings with not so much of a larger parking lot areas. And then you have some of the small businesses, so you see what the impacts would be. Many of the businesses, especially if they're they're business chains. They are used to paying these, uh, stormwater fees because most other communities. In the Salt Lake Valley and really in the state, um, have have stormwater fees that, um, they charge. And we also put in this graph, which we've showed this to you before, but this roughly shows in. The general area along the Wasatch Front, not all of the communities. Um, where where a seven dollars and fifty cents, um, ERU or payment would be. With Cottonwood Heights, our staff, we sat down with Susie Becker and our public works and. Finance staff sat down and we feel and would recommend the seven dollars and fifty ERU. With the three percent, um, annual rate increase. Not looking at bonds right now, and then that would that would save three hundred thousand in the general fund, but still would provide a contribution from the general fund. We feel that that amount is reasonable as far as the the monthly costs and annual costs. And in addition to that, it's it's in in the middle area compared to the high end of Pleasant Grove down to Lehigh of the lower end. Some of these lower end cities have larger, um, tax bases. And, um, we felt that that's a reasonable amount, so that's what our recommendation is from a staff perspective. But keep in mind, we can look at different scenarios, but we would really like the council to give us some direction and let us. Start going out and, um, preparing marketing materials and get, um, public input on this for your consideration at a future time. After that public impros- public input process occurs. Questions.
Yeah, I've got a question. How hard would it be to divide that ERU? In half for residential and have it be twenty five hundred for smaller homes? And five thousand for larger homes?
The the E, if I if I may, uh, Councilmember, the ERU that you're looking at. Is an average of the homes in the city of Cottonwood Heights. We did an actual study on this. Um, back this, we we've done actually a couple of these when Kevin, if you remember our former GIS analyst. He did a study on this and came up with this number and we've also had our one now Melissa. She's also gone through this as well as our engineers and we feel like five thousand is an ERU. Um, for the city of Cottonwood Heights based on those studies.
Could we could we divvy up homes though, maybe by value or something, the way we did small, medium and large businesses?
Medium and large businesses are based on impervious surface, which is the same as a typical ERU for a home. Um, it it this all, it's not necessarily the fact that it's a large business. Uh, it it's a large, physically a large business, physical parking lot, physical roof. All of these impervious surfaces, it's not just based on income or anything of that nature. It's the actual impervious surface. So for the homes, you have driveways, you have the homes, you have. These various hard scape surfaces that are on them and the average we came up with was about five thousand.
And it it would be difficult to do that because this is based on geographic elements. Impervious area, it's not based on income elements related to businesses or that. And the five thousand is pretty representative of what the other studies with with the other cities have done. And and it's a model that has actually worked quite well.
I have a question on the schools, uh, because of what they will be charged. Will that come back at us, uh, through? A tax increase because of the schools paying extra on their properties?
A a lot of that depends on this. On the school district and and if they can. If they can cover these costs under their current, uh, tax structure. I like I say, I think a lot of schools do pay this throughout school districts. We're just one of the cities, one of the few cities that don't have this, so. It's hard to really say how the school districts would would feel about this. What we would do in that public input process is definitely sit down. With the canyon school district and outline what the proposal is and and. Then there would be input processes on that for sure.
I guess for that question, Sandy Draper, Midville. Um, all have a stormwater fee or is off of your list?
Yes, they do. They all do.
Do we know what those numbers, do you remember what those numbers are?
So San, well, Sandy, if you see here, they're about six dollars. Uh, Midvale, where did I see Midvale? It's here. I mean, is it not here?
Okay, Midville, Sandy Draper would be the other.
Yeah, Draper is right here and they're up in the nine dollar range. I thought Midvale, Midvale does. They may not be on the sheet, but they do have a stormwater fee. We'd have to look at that. It's just not, they're not on the sheet.
My point asking that question is is right now, we we would be the only. The schools within our city boundaries, the five elementaries, middle school and high school would be the only ones that wouldn't currently be paying that. Be in some form.
Yeah, um, Midvale is actually, I I do have it on another sheet here, but it's not on the screen. Midvale is at about eight fifty, it looks like. Is what they're. What the their, uh. Their U is.
Okay, um. We we've obviously discussed stormwater, uh, issues in the past, um. When, under the origination of the ci- the the city, again, one of the first studies we did was a, uh, uh, stormwater improvement. Um, study, um, where we identified a lot of things over the five years that we did, um. We've always paid for it out of the general fund. Um. I, I guess I do see some. Sense in in balancing this out with, I mean, we can continue to just pay for it out of the general fund and assess it as a property tax. That's certainly one way to go. I actually went through and, you know, the 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 four different options range anywhere from a twelve percent to a twenty one percent. Um, increase in our, um. Property tax rate to generate that same, those same bottom line figures with the, uh, transfers from. The or the revenue generated under the various scenarios. Um, that's certainly one way to do it. Um, but I I do take Tim's point of. Uh, impervious surfaces that are, you know, we we have. Um, churches of various kinds, uh, mosques, synagogues, we have, uh, schools and some other. Um, and public entities, uh, City Hall, um, other. Um, Murray owns property in the city that, uh, has impervious services. Those entities are obviously, yes, all tax exempt from property tax, and this would be a way to maybe. Uh. Spread that. Uh. Spread those costs a little bit, so that at that point it becomes, again, it becomes a philosophical discussion. Um, I think. I mean, at least for me, I certainly see the need to keep the infrastructure up. Um, stormwater is one of those that it's not a problem until it doesn't work and then suddenly it's a really, really, really big problem. Um, it's like our roads, we 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 push that can down the road a little bit while we went through a recession. Um, but we were finally able to get things up to speed where we had, we put a five year plan in place and we're working on that. This is another one of those infrastructures that we're directly responsible for. I think we should do something. Um. I I guess I tend to like the dedicated funds for capital type improvements. Um, quite a bit more than I do for operational type things because that seems to me that that matches more. In my head, apples to apples. And that was one of the reasons I was. Cause, um, Christine and I were on the budget committee, we recommended the option three, that one provided some. Relief to the general fund. With generating the revenues necessary to start improving the stormwater system. Um, but not. Entirely put the entire s- system all on the on the new fees backs. So. We have other comments that, uh. Councilmember Peterson or Michael, do you have?
I have a quick question, Scott, while we're on it, uh, what's the? How long have other cities been collecting this? And I I know that it's been kind of something that's been discussed. Uh. And there's philosophical differences in how to get this money, uh. Property taxes all at once, this, uh, seven fifty a month. To me, it seems a little bit less of a. A hit than at the end of the year. But how long have they been enacted this collection? Has it been going on for many years or? Is this a last in the last fif- ten or fifteen years?
Well, I I don't have and and Matt may have more understanding of the timing. We haven't researched the timing. I know. I know in Murray where I I worked, um, they began implementation, they they've been a. A community for a hundred plus years and they began implementation in about two thousand six. So it took them a long time to implement this. I think a lot of the stormwater. Uh, fees and the studies and things started. Really becoming more popular with communities. When I say pop- popular is not probably the best term, but as there were regulatory. Uh, standards that were being pushed by the federal government, it prompted the need to do more. And so I think over the past, you know, twenty fifteen to twenty years, there's been more of an emphasis on the need to address that. As well as aging infrastructure. And so so many cities have gone to this, you know, over the last fifteen to twenty years. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's that's my understanding and I hope I'm not inaccurate in saying that. Some may have done been doing it before that, but. But I know that there's been more of a push with the regulatory standards.
Yeah, with the, uh, the new phase two permitting that came in, a lot of cities, it's been about fifteen, twenty plus years that a lot of them started implementing them. So you are correct, it's, uh, also. You know, it's very similar to, you know, the any other type of utility fee, I guess. Um, let that utility pay for itself. Uh. Through the through the, uh, fee and it's equal as best it can be throughout. So it it's been around for quite a while.
Hey, what's the cost to collect this fee monthly?
So we looked at that and and it's and Scott Jurkis, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. We've talked with Rocky Mountain Power. To do actually the billing side of things. We could either look at doing it in-house, which would we, it would add some costs, but also through Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, Mill Creek, I think, did it did it through Rocky Mountain Power. And it's in the vicinity of, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, somewhere around ninety to a hundred and fifteen thousand. To do the billing side of things, is that correct?
That is correct. It's something that we would have to go through a little bit of a process to officially identify all the properties and everything that you do. Um, there's a little bit of a difference of utilizing, um, Rocky Mountain Power where you would be utilizing and billing. Whoever is being metered for electricity, so that could be a tenant in some cases. Um, or if you did your own, you would probably bill, uh, to the property owner. Um, where you have some recourse if somebody does not pay, um, where you can certify the, um. The, um. The payment against the taxes if if you had somebody that was unwilling to pay. Um, and so on and so forth. So I think that. Taylorsville City is billing through Rocky Mountain Power and Mill Creek City are the two that I'm aware of.
And Holiday is looking at working with Rocky Mountain Power, but we would want to assess. If it would be cheaper for us to do it in-house with additional costs versus Rocky Mountain and we were. We will still go through that and have those answers before you would ever consider, uh, adoption of anything related to this.
So do we know if it would be the same to collect six dollars as it would be eight dollars or does it go by the amount collected?
No, it would be the same. Okay, the same.
They're doing a per per piece on the on the bill, not a percentage of what you're billing.
So are there, if you get to the point, we'd love to have direction. Um, like I say, we're recommending seven fifty. This is just the starting point, keep that in mind. You're not committed to that, we would, we would get input through a public process. And then come back to you, but that's what we're seeking tonight, if you're willing to do that.
I I'm certainly in favor of 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 initiating the public process and having either some open houses and or public. Hearings on the subject. Um, you know, it's it's it it gets to be, you know, what people can do and how they do it, what how they. How important they feel that infrastructure maintenance is. Um. As far as options, I would, I I I I still feel that option three is probably the best overall mix. Um, but, uh. That that that's 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 my two cents. Um, I'd be interested to hear what. Um, I, uh, the five dollars seemed really. I uh the five dollars seemed really low. I I don't know where we're gonna find another two hundred thousand dollars in our current budget. That speeds up a property tax increase, in my opinion. Uh, I'm actually surprised there's many that are as high as nine dollars. I mean, that would be, I guess, my second choice, but I would. Still lean towards preparing some presentations around the option three.
Just to clarify, Scott, do we know, and maybe it's been mentioned, how many of the other cities have actually dipped into their general fund? Uh, rather than just using the fee itself?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, Matt and Scott Jurgis. I don't, I don't know how many are are augmenting. Their stormwater fee with their general fund. I I would anticipate especially the higher, the higher amounts that they are not at all. Um, and even some of the ones down here, I I I don't think many are augmenting it. But it's an option for us if we want to.
I know that I had looked in Holiday and uh Mill Creek and us. Were some of the last cities that had not implemented this. Any of the townships have not because it's not allowable for them. Well, I shouldn't say that. They they could potentially do a stormwater fee, but I don't think they have implemented it. In terms of whether or not they're augmenting their costs with general fund money, that would take an individual. Review of each of their budgets in order to try and determine that, and you'd have to do it over a multiple year timeframe, because things ebb and flow as you look at. Um, the the uh. You know, the projects that need to be done.
I think we're ready for a public comment, Tim.
Oh, I I just had one, one question. And maybe, I don't know if you know the answer to this, Tim. I know the mayor asked for. You all to look at option four, was was he thinking start at that number and then? You start making some significant improvements over time and and then you can raise it in a couple of years, or do you do you have any idea of what? Where he was at with that?
I I don't know, well. I I don't necessarily want to speak for him. He he did not say, he he wasn't leaning towards the five dollar option. In his conversations with me, he just wanted to see what that would mean. Financially for us. And so he just wanted to see that option. It wasn't something he was advocating necessarily for. He just wanted to see it. That's my understanding.
And so if could you, I mean, so could you do that? Could you start at, say, five dollars and see where it takes you and see, I mean, I know the pictures that. Matt ship shared with us were harrowing, but maybe it's not as bad, or maybe it's worse, and you'd need to, I I mean. Is and and if you did start, even if you started at seven fifty and realized you needed to go to nine later, is it another truth and taxation process, or what's? What's what's the mechanism by which that gets changed?
So on your second question, the the mechanism is not a truth and taxation process. It's a process, the city. Like we're going through now, the city would get public input and then make that decision if they wanted to go from seven fifty to nine or five dollars to seven fifty. It's not a truth and taxation process, but it's a public input process to make sure people are aware of of doing that. As far as your your first comment, the if you go with the five. And you wanted to maintain the million dollars, because a million dollars a year, you're still. You're still roughly twenty potentially plus years out to addressing all the nineteen. Point two million dollars worth of projects, depending on how things lay out. We feel like um pushing that further with a reduced amount of. Of fee is probably not a good thing to do. It's better to 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 go a little bit more diligently to to address these over a twenty year period rather than pushing that out. And five dollars would push it out further.
And what what happens when you get to year twenty? You start over again, so this, once implemented, this fee never goes away, because you're just sort of, you fixed everything and then things that you started in year one start to fall apart. I mean, what's? Is.
I I think that, yeah, I think there's probably, we we would be constantly, when I say constantly, every. For several years, we would be doing another analysis to determine where we're at on needs, and there's probably infrastructure that. In twenty years will be old at that point, and so it's likely that this fee would would continue. But that's all dependent upon how the council wants to to look at it at that time.
And Tim, the other thing, I guess, the timing on the implement, in how do we implement this on the? Say, the the toughest uh problems first and then work through that scenario was as far as uh. How we how we attack the worst problems first and kind of move through there, it's gonna be a whole system of. Of what can we do the quickest to take care of the most serious problems first?
Yeah, and and we've with with the stormwater. The stormwater uh facility needs assessment. We've identified the high priority projects that have to be addressed. Which includes pipe replacements, medium priority and lower priority, so those have been identified and we would just have to. Strategically work through that um with those high priority projects with the funds that we have. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Oh, you're right, it's a. Yeah, we've got list, it's a matter of how much money is available and then how to get the better bang for the dollar. But at the same time, you have to remember over this next twenty years, we still have maintenance we have to do. This this money is looking at capital repairs right now. But we still have annual maintenance that'll be going on with the same process, so. This is a, it's an infrastructure we have to take care of, like our roads, we gotta take care of and keep going.
And we're currently, this is showing that uh expenses covered is is seven hundred nineteen thousand on each of these. Scenarios, that that doesn't just magically go away, so I guess after the twenty years. You're gonna be still needing to cover that, the inflationary adjustment to that seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, accounting wise, I'm assuming if you get all of the major projects taken care of. And you end up collecting too much, that is. Is collected kind of like an enterprise fund or it's it's stashed in there, that would be a separate line item on our budget and our CAFR reports. Um, for stormwater fee. Revenues or fund balance, is that the way that would work?
Scott, you may want to address that, but yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, very similar to the CDRA, it would have its own fund, its own revenue sources and its own expenditures. It could be supplemented by the general fund, or it could be standalone depending on how it how it goes. And then, like you said, if it if it had a balance in there that was growing, we could address it and adjust the fee either up or down, either way. As we go through into the future.
Yeah, so so in the twenty five year timeframe, we find it, oh geez, there's. Five million dollars, or there's ten million dollars here that we really don't need right now, that would be where you probably adjust the fee or remove it. And 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 move on from that, from that point.
You could definitely do that.
Like I kind of agree with council member Michael, they don't seem to actually ever disappear. But uh at least that's, you know. That's that's the way that would be. Held, um councilor Michael, do you have a an opinion on which way to go? Would you, would you like to see public staff prepare? Some things for public hearing and public input on this, and if so. Are you still on option three of you, or you changed that? Your your mind or thoughts on where you'd like to see it presented?
Um, I I I guess I'm struggling here because the mayor's not here, so he. I guess we're, you're just hoping to get four votes to move on and. Make his a null vote, or what what is your, are we waiting for the mayor? So that all five of us have a say.
Um, I I was just going off of what what uh, you know, Tim had just said, that it's gonna take staff time to prepare. Whatever they they put together, they were looking for some direction on if we're going to go for which option they would like. So. Go ahead, Doug.
Is it, is it, are we trying to eliminate the ones that are least attractive? I would hate to collect five. And lose the eighty ninety thousand for collection. And if you took the seven fifty and it still costs you the same amount to collect it. You've just got to find the the best case scenario as far as making your money. Go as far as you can, and also the interest rate that would be charged. I can't remember how that worked with science as far as. How far out we can maintain an interest rate so that we would get the the best case scenario on how far out they go on interest rate.
It so, so the interest rate would be based on if we do bond. So a- and that's something that we would have to talk about at another time. I I would probably recommend if the fee is implemented that. We start off on on the basis of a. Of the uh fee and what we collect and then determine at a later point if we want to look at bonding, which would impact interest rates. I I would do a page you go to start off with and see what we can get done initially without looking at bonding. That that's where I'm at right now.
That's my preference as well, yeah.
So I'm supportive of moving forward. I feel uncomfortable that the mayor's not here to voice his opinion. I I feel comfortable with a seven fifty. But again.
I I said, I don't expect that you'll have this completed in two weeks as far as what you would prepare for the. For the uh the public, I mean, I I expect you could certainly. If if what I'm hearing is there's interest in at least moving forward to prepare something to present to the public to get their sentiment. On handling stormwater this way. Um, initially. With option three, um and then we can discuss the fine details, certainly as we got closer to either a public hearing or an open house or. However, we decide we want to publicize it.
And if you'd like, I I could bring. Or when I, when the mayor is back, I could bring him up to speed as far as the conversation here. If we tentatively want to move forward with the option three. And I can explain uh what what the conversation was. If he has concerns with that, we can definitely bring it back before we take this out to the public.
Yeah, it's like, I'd certainly come up next in in two weeks, or, I mean, under the budget review. Which I expected he would be back, so. Go ahead.
I feel comfortable in moving that way. I mean, we're not, this isn't set in stone. I think uh I think in in two weeks that we should fine tune this and and kind of. Talk to the mayor and and kind of all of us, it'll give us a little more chance to look at the numbers as well.
I guess maybe uh. Tim, you work with staff and put to together kind of a an outline or a potential. Timeline on doing the public education, getting input, that type of uh. We can at least get some of those uh preliminary things done. Even if we, and and general numbers with ones that obviously are subject to change. I think I wireframe, that's the word that I was looking for, just kind of some, these are the steps we need to take and when, and this is when it. Could come to fruition. But I think people would certainly be interested um on listening to the whys and the wherefore, and certainly would have input on something like this.
We can work on that. Is council member Bruce uh on board with the option three? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're ready for public comment.
Okay. Yeah, we'll put together information on the timeline and I can get timelines and I can get it out to you, and then I can talk to the mayor as well and. We can go from that point. That's helpful for us. Thank you.
Thank you, I I I, yeah, I I heard her say that earlier, so I didn't ask her again. And if she's certainly willing to, are able to chip in if 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 I miss something, so. All right, um, the next item on the agenda is. Modification to our idling code. Um, and you've got this under Chief Russo.
You do, you ready?
Yes.
When in in twenty eighteen, we adopted an ordinance. Related to ordoning or or idling within the city limits. Um, in twenty nineteen, the Utah Legislature modified the state statute. So what we are proposing is to modify. And make the changes within our current idling. Stat or ordinance to mirror what is currently in state code. Um, and there's only a couple minor differences, but they're. Uh, they're important differences, so the first one is. Um, enforcing the idling ordinance on private property. It, the way ours was rewarded before. You know, it didn't take into consideration businesses with drive-through. Local businesses located on on their private property. The new idling ordinances talks about that and gives an exemption um for them to. You know, for someone to run through Starbucks without the police running and tapping on their window and. You, the the business owner can put up a sign and and educate them, or they can actually ask them to. Shut it down after one minute. Um, as well, but I'm not sure how many would do that if it's contrary to. You know, uh make their business. But it's it's a, it's it's not a huge change, but it's just the functionality of it makes more sense for us to. You know, not be enforcing that on private property, especially in places like drive-throughs. The second change is moving. The warning periods or warning citations from a number of three to one. That this is consistent with how we do seatbelt tickets, we give one warning and then we can issue a keeper ticket. You know, it's has a fine associated with it. Now, having said that. Um, we keep, it's easier to track the one warning as it would be, you know, as opposed to three. And. Still having it at one warning doesn't take away the officer's discretion, so. We would hope as they do with the seatbelt ones, they use good judgment and and the spirit intent of the whole ordinances. Education, but yet to um send the message that, you know, it is, it's important to keep our air clean and. So people should be turning off their cars. The other language that you're concerned about is. In the original ordinance is still there. It doesn't change it at all. It gives an exemption, you know, for canine trucks and to keep, you know, your kids warm if you're stuck in traffic. And those kind of things, but. In your packet, you will see a red line version of the changes and you will see the current state law that it mirrors. So the police department would support. Adopting those changes and I'm open any questions, thanks.
All right, this is not on the agenda for tonight, so. Um, I guess are there? Any other comments, questions or concerns about our our? I mean, we're gonna open it up to make these changes to conform the state statute, obviously that would open it up for other items as well. Although these seem like they would be necessary, just you do want to kind of. Keep in line with what the legislature says we have to do.
And we would, we would bring this to your, to the council for consideration at the next city council meeting, so October twentieth is what we were anticipating. We just wanted to to make you aware of what we were looking at.
The the big deal was the private property issue, enforcing it, you know, in in on private properties and drive-throughs, and this takes care of that. And it keeps the other language there, and I think it's still. You know, accomplishes your desire. Intent in in handling the idling issues.
Okay, um. If uh there are no further comments or questions, and I would uh guess we probably can go ahead and continue to bring this on for next. Meeting, Tim and Paula, um if there's something that shows up in the interim, then. Just any of the council, um contact uh Tim via email, let him know. Obviously, questions would go through ordinance enforcement or the the police department. I would assume it's typically the police. Okay, um, last item on staff reports. Is a uh arts council. Okay, um, last item on staff reports is a arts council project. City manager has a presentation or description of that.
Yeah, and Councilmember Peterson has been the liaison for the council and the arts council and probably can. Can give some insight into this as well, but the arts council has been talking about. The possibility of having a sculpture on the southeast. Side of city hall and are interested in going through a process for requests for proposals. Or qualifications to get a designs artist involved in developing. A tree sculpture to be located in that area. We don't have a lot of details other than what as, as far as what they want to see with the sculpture. They would want this person to come in and develop some concepts that would focus on a sculpture that would symbolize a tree. Represents the city associated and the elements would associate with a sense of community, stability, legacy and growing and thriving place. And develop some design concepts that eventually would be brought to the council. They feel like this can be funded through grants that they've already received that are eligible. Roughly in the ten to fourteen thousand dollar range to do this. And so they want to move forward and do the request for proposals. I wanted to make sure that we brought this to the council and make sure that you're aware of it. And if you had any input or insight or any concerns that. We talk about that before we go forward with a request for proposal process. And Councilmember Peterson, if you want to add or Paula as well, if there's things that I'm missing, but that's, that's what they're interested in doing.
Thanks, Tim. If it's Paula, it's okay if I start. We did get a few very rough renderings and a few things like that. They talked about varying degrees of. Of image and, and something that I, I know that they want to do something that, that obviously represents the city. What that is, it's still up for. I guess discussion. We saw a few, there's a, a company. Or an artist up in Park City that we did get a few renderings from, but it was just really quick sketch. Type things and talking about the cottonwood, obviously cottonwood trees. They didn't want it to look like a dead tree. So there's, there's just a lot. We're the genesis of this project as far as presenting anything. But we know the location, where it would go and right now it's, it's in, like I say, it's at the beginning of, of the process. Paula, do you have anything else to say about that?
The only thing I would add is that we have put the clause on the RFP that says that we will give preference to. Any design that is made out of sustainable materials.
What type of material I didn't.
Sustainable materials.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I, I got a little bit garbled just right there. I'd had a, a question and Doug, maybe you can answer. Are they tied specifically to the concept of a tree or just something? That represents the city.
That is not definitive yet. They talked about obviously repurposing iron and different things like that. That was one of the, I guess. Made it attractive on this one artist, but I don't think it's nothing set in stone or iron at this time. I think that there will be a process of maybe getting three different concepts and then, and present that and kind of go from there.
I guess the only other concern that I would see, I mean, I, I, I'm very much favorable. I like going to public. Places and seeing sculpture or art or other things like that. That's, I think those are great. The. Other side of that is, is you want to make sure that it's something that's not also a, an attractive nuisance. You'd hate to have it be a magnet for. You know, you always hope that people will respect what's there, but sometimes they don't. And so I, I think that would be part of that consideration. And any designer final decision on making sure that it can fulfill what it's after without being an attractive nuisance. For mischievousness.
That was, that was discussed as well proximity. As far as, as obviously with children and different things like that as well as, as grownups.
And that's a pro con because there, you know, that's exactly who you'd like to see. I mean, it, like I said, I, I love being able to go down and see those types of things. Are there any other? Councilmember Bruce or Michael, do you have any comments or thoughts on them going forward with this?
I believe that Art Council is working with the Historic Committee on merging a couple of concepts. And they have something really cool planned, but I'll wait for them to present to the council at large.
They're going to get us with both barrels then, I guess. Get two of you involved. So that's.
It's really great. You'll like it a lot.
I think that's, that, that's great. I'm certainly in favor of them, of looking at concepts. And certainly as we get different committees and things to work together, I think that, if something historical like that would be great as well.
It really would.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. The calendar is, is blank. At least for anything specific. I know that there was in the newsletter, we were scheduling another open house in November. To do some final design presentation of the public on the roundabout. And, but I'm not aware of anything else unless somebody else has something. This would be the time, I guess, to bring it up.
That open house would be, is scheduled for November twelfth. We'll, we'll get it on as we move closer to that date and we'll, we'll be bringing. Information to the council prior to that meeting on the roundabout. So you can see the design that is. Prepared.
I'm not aware of any reason for a closed session. Is that correct? Tim or Shane?
That's correct from my perspective.
Okay. If that is the case, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session and reconvene our business meeting. At seven o'clock.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved in, moved by Councilmember Bruce, second of a Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, with that, we will call this meeting adjourned and we will reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you.